Well, we have five, so that has a chorus. That means we can start. Welcome to the City Council Meeting, Oklahoma City, for July 19th. We'll start with invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Pastor Darrell Stettler from Bible Methodist Church who will lead us in the invocation, and then I will ask Councilman Stone Cypher to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You're better stand.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our Father, our Creator, our Judge, our Guide, we would ask, Lord, that you would give us grace today as we push open the throne room doors of the universe. And we come in, in the name of Jesus, and ask that you would give us the grace that we need for this day today. Lord, much business will be done here today, and around us is a city of million people. Those people, Lord, they need guidance and leadership, and as leaders, these men, ladies, need guidance and leadership. So I would ask that you would guide and direct them today. I pray for all of us that we would have the humility to remember that you are God and we are not, and that we would do all things under your leadership and under your kingship. May your kingdom come, may your will be done, as you taught us to pray, on earth as it is in heaven, and may it begin in this day in this council meeting. We pray, Lord, for those around us who are hurting the city, those who have lost jobs and economic situation we're currently in, and we pray for wisdom, direction, leadership, and strength and perseverance for those who are hurting and are looking for economic employment at the moment. We also ask, Lord, that in all of these men and women's lives, that you would help their hearts to turn to you for leadership, guidance. In all the things that we do this day, may we bring honor and glory to the great and powerful name of Jesus, for it is in his name that I ask all these things. Amen.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order and move on to item threes, office, from the office of the mayor. We have three items of appointments. I think we can vote on those all together. Everybody cast your votes. What happened there?
Somebody's been messing their stuff.
Okay, we'll try this again. Everybody cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. All right, move on to item four, which is the Journal of Council Proceedings. And we'll receive the journal from July 5th and approve the journal from June 21st. Everybody cast your votes. It's approved unanimously. And then, item five is a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor of Hugh this morning, starting on page 23, page 23, under item 9H1. Item B, 1145 North Ellison, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item C, 4712 West I-40 Service Road, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item E, 1501 North McMillan Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F, 5107 North Miller, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K, 12504 Whispering Hollow Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item N, 1728 Northwest 2nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item Q, 2920 Southwest 11th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item V, 128 Southwest 27th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. And item X, 2236 Southwest 32nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item AC, 1620 Southwest 52nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. And then off of page, on page 24, item 9I1. Item A, 1145 North Ellison, we ask that that be stricken. Owner secured. Item D, 4712 West I-40 Service Road, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item F, 5107 North Miller, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item M, 12504 Whispering Hollow Road, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item R, 2920 Southwest 11th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item V, 128 Southwest 27th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item X, 2236 Southwest 32nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. And finally, AB, 1620 Southwest 52nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner secured.
All right, thanks. Moving on to item six, we got revocable permits. We have one from Revolve Productions to hold the AMP Festival. And we have one person signed up, Toby Coleman. Tell us about what is the AMP Festival?
AMP Festival is a one-day event from noon to 8:00 PM that is an all-female music and art festival. All of the participants are female, or the bands are female-fronted bands. We are closing the street just west of the womb, the alley that's just west of the womb. It's the alley just east of Broadway, and down by the tracks as well. We will also put a sign down on Oklahoma Avenue that the street is closed to discourage traffic from driving and trying to make U-turns on 9th Street prior to getting to the tracks. We won't need a sound permit because it's 12 to 8:00 PM. All of the businesses on the street have been notified and actually have signed off on the permit, or that they've approved the street closure, and we've begun the process. We're probably about 70% finished with notifying all of the outlying businesses that the event's going on.
Okay. And you said it was tore from 12 to 8?
12 to 8:00 PM. We will begin set up that morning at 8 o'clock in the morning and probably be tore down and out of there by 10:00 PM.
Okay. Well, it's in Ward 6.
Great, well, thank you for coming so early. This event is August 27th.
Yes, ma'am.
So let's remember to let people know closer to the event as well.
Yes, I will.
It's a great location to do that. I would move approval.
Okay. Cast your votes. It's approved unanimously.
Thank you.
We will now recess the council meeting and reconvene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There's four items. Are there any comments or questions? Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the MFA and reconvene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Looks like there's six items. Any comments or questions? We'll cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the PPA and reconvene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There's only one item today. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Adjourn the EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, are there any individual considerations?
Could we defer 7AV2 to the tail of the agenda?
Which item?
It's 7AV2. I'd make a motion that we defer that to the end of the docket.
Can we do that? And should we, so should we vote on that right now?
AV, A as in Victor.
AV.
Yeah, as chair, you can just hold it to the end.
We don't need to vote on it?
You can just hold it.
Okay, we'll just hold on that one and vote at the end, okay?
James, if I could mention a couple of items, 7U, 7V, 7W, 7X, and 7Z. They're all kind of lumped together. It's all one thing.
Okay, sounds good.
And I think we have some presentations on one or two of them, so.
Okay.
Jim, which did we have a presentation on?
We have three presentations this morning. We have item Z. Chris Varga is going to be here to talk about the Continuum of Care Program. We have Kathy O'Connor is here this morning to talk about the resolution of the Coors Shore reinvestment area. And then we have Chris Savage here on item BB, which is on the West Trail, the Will Rogers Trail.
Okay. Well, then I can take X off if we have a presentation, or Z off if we have a presentation. I just briefly want to mention the others.
Okay. Does anybody else have any?
Yeah, I have three that I'd like Eric to comment on. AC, AD, and AM, as in Mary.
All right, well, do we want to start with the presentations, and then we'll get to each item? Is that how we normally do it? I think that's how we normally do it.
All right. Start with the presentation?
Yeah, one of the presentations.
Great. Chris, is he? Chris is not yet. Chris Savage is here. We'll go with that one. Chris Savage is here. We can do BB, and this has to do with the, one of the MAPS 3 trail projects. Chris Savage is with Johnson &amp; Associates.
All right, good morning. I win by luck of the draw, I see. All right, so this is Project M3T002A, MAPS 3 Trail Improvements Phase 2, Project 1 of the I-44 West Trail. As you may recall, the I-44 West Trail will connect Lake Hefner to the Oklahoma River. It's been divided, that's about an eight-mile run. It's been divided into three sections, and this is the north section, beginning at Lake Hefner. So we're bringing to you today final plans and specifications. There we go. So we're talking about a multi-use trail from Lake Hefner to Northwest 50th Street. It's proposed to be 10 to 12 feet wide. It's a multi-use trail. Follows an alignment that was approved by this body in 2014, the I-44 West Trail Alignment Study. Total length of this project is just over two and a half miles, with an original budget of $3 million. Our current construction cost estimate is just over $2.5 million. This is a typical section of two layouts of the trail. On the left, you see the trail in an unconfined space, so we're away from the street, out in a field-type of setting. So it's a 12-foot-wide trail with a sodded landscaped area on both sides. On the right, you see the trail adjacent to the streets. So on the left of that section is the street's curb. On the right would be right-of-way and private development. This is the general route of the trail, beginning at Lake Hefner at the upper-left of the image, and ending at Northwest 50th and Grand Boulevard at the lower-right of the image. We'll take a look at that in more detail. The head of the trail will be at the parking lot at Northwest Expressway and Meridian Avenue. It then proceeds south down Meridian, on the east side of Meridian, crossing Northwest 63rd Street to the south side of Northwest 63rd Street, where we'll head east. Continue east to Northwest Expressway, again, on the south side of 63rd, and on the south side of Northwest Expressway, to Portland Avenue. We'll cross Portland Avenue and be on the east side of Portland Avenue and head south to Northwest 56th Street. We'll be on the south side of Northwest 56th, and we'll proceed east to Grand Boulevard. We'll then head south on the west side of Grand Boulevard to Northwest 50th Street, which is the end of this project. Project 2 will pick this up and extend it down to the fairgrounds, and then Project 3, continue it onwards towards the river. We needed a little bit of right-of-way for this project. The blue boxes represent temporary construction right-of-way. The red box represents some permanent right-of-way. All of those have been acquired. And right now, our schedule as it stands is, as I mentioned, right-of-way acquisition is complete. We'll approve the project today, and then we'll bid the project on August 9th. We'll award the contract on August 30th, with notice received the following day, and we're anticipating a start date of September of this year, with a completion date of May 2017. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. Are you going to start, is the actual construction going to start up kind of how you showed the route, or is it all going to kind of be happening all at once?
That's a great question. That's up to the contractor to determine.
Okay.
I would expect that he would begin at one end or the other, and move along the alignment in sequence, as opposed to starting everywhere all at once.
Okay.
Do we have to finish Phase 1 before we will go out to bid for Phase 2, or can those be somewhat contiguous?
Phase 2 will be here at your next meeting, and then in the near future, we'll have Phase 3 out also.
This weekend, my wife and I were in Dallas, and so we went over to the KD Trail, and she ran it, I walked it. And the one thing that I was interested about the trail itself was the division of lanes. There was a kind of a pedestrian-walking lane, and then there were the bikes and the joggers. Will there be that kind of division for the different uses?
There will not. This trail will be set up in a typical trail configuration, as you'll see all of the other trails, the most recent trail being the River Trail. So it'll have a striped line down the middle, and that's what you get. So it's, it'll be only divided that way.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, welcome. Next presentation?
Chris Varga is here, Chris Varga is here to talk about the Continuum of Care.
Hi, good morning. I'm Chris Varga with the Community Development Division in the Planning Department, and this morning, we wanted to talk just a little bit about the Continuum of Care Program. This is our largest amount of funding that we get from HUD for our most needy citizens, our homeless, and our special services program. The total amount that we get awarded this year was around $3.3 million. So we have a number of social services contracts that we issue under this continuum, and I wanted to have Jared Shatted speak with you. He's on my staff. He is the project manager for the Continuum of Care Program, and just spend a minute describing to you the process for how these awards are selected.
Jared Shatted with Planning and Community Development, as Chris just told you. Sorry, I had to bring my memo up here. I forget these amounts, they vary. The Continuum of Care Program funds we refer to as permanent supportive housing for all of our, well, not all of, as many as we can get into the units. There's obviously always a shortage, but for all of our homeless, individuals, disabilities that we house. We've got around 21 projects. This is not all of them this year. There's three of them that we're trying to amend the contracts for their admin amounts. But the application process has to get approved every year. This is not like your fiscal year grants that bounces around. Their start dates are all over the place, and when they open up the application, it's not at the same time every year, which makes it extremely frustrating. But this one was approved to submit back in November, and HUD has just now got us the contracts. We were, I'm proud to say, the only, the way the continuum works is the state is broke up by different continuums. Usually it's multi-county, but Tulsa and Oklahoma City have our own continuums. And we are the only continuum in the state that actually got all of our money renewed this year. We did not receive any cuts, and we did get a new program. There's a lot of possible reasons for that. I can't state all of them, but the program's been stating it's going to get more and more competitive every year, and they finally are pulling the trigger on that, is what it seems like. So the application process for this year actually just reopened, and so we're about to go through this again. And what that application process entails is that we have a board that we're required to have by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The application process for this program takes about two months. Within a month in, we put out the application about a month before they're supposed to come in and propose. So about a month in, they'll come in and propose, and that board will rank these projects based on scoring criteria, most of which is determined by HUD, and based on performance throughout, performance throughout the year and previous years. And based on that ranking, then HUD will, they submit an application online to this program called e-Snaps, and then they list those rankings, then HUD determines whether they're going to get, you know, funded or not. Usually everything, they break this into two tiers, a tier one and a tier two. Almost always, a tier one gets funded. Tier two is when it's typically in danger. Happy to say again that as of, as of today, since they started breaking these into two tiers, we've never lost a tier-two program. I think that's also because we have been good about reallocating funds when they're not getting used, and also, we're about this year to start changing some program typologies that they have wanted to do away with with this program, but we figured out a way to keep them all funded. So again, very proud of that. But this round here is for $3,291,923, and that's without the three other contracts, which I can't recall the amounts of those are at this point in time. And these are just the HUD contracts. We're passing them now to, so that some of these programs we can get combined, we have to actually pass the HUD contracts and get them signed before we can do that, because some agencies have multiple programs. It's a lot easier to administer if we're able to combine them. And so that's why we're passing this now, and the operating agreements with the city will be passed at a later date, once we get them all back signed. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Jared, I really just want to pass on my compliments to you and the staff. It is a real, it's very telling that we have received 100% of the funding that we've asked for, and we haven't had any programs cut. And I, you know, we have a fabulous Continuum of Care Committee that supports this work. They're all volunteers that provide their time to evaluate the programs. They go out, you know, it's a very similar process, maybe not quite as rigorous, but similar to the United Way, in that we go out and visit every one of the programs, evaluate the services they provide, evaluate their financial reporting, how they expend their dollars, and they are scored and ranked based on those criteria. So it's a really important role. We talk about this every time a social service allocation comes up, you know, out of our general fund, we wish we had more dollars. That number's been stagnant for a very long time, and in fact, it's been more difficult this year because of the 5% budget cuts that we took. But when you look at the picture in totality, this $3.5 million plus the other three programs that will come forward, help those agencies do the incredible work that they're doing in the community. So I think it's important for everybody to notice, and so, James, if I maybe can just finish, that was really what I wanted to talk about here. U, V, W, and X are all allocations of these dollars outside of the federal money. We also provide $190,000 annually to the Homeless Alliance. It's been an annual contract since 2007, and we do provide dollars out of our social, out of the general fund budget to supplement these dollars in a small way. So the agencies that we support, you know, are the Homeless Alliance, the YWCA, Red Rock Behavioral, Sunbeam Family Services, Upper Transitions, Neighborhood Services Organization, Heartline, and there are City Care, Center for Employment Opportunities, which I think is a new program that we're very excited about, OKC Metro Alliance, Positive Tomorrow's. It's a very broad swath of the agencies that provide these kind of services to our most needy citizens, and your staff in the Planning Department does a terrific job. So, thank you.
That it? Thank you. Thank you for everything you do. All right, I think we're ready for Kathy now, right?
We are. Kathy O'Connor is here to talk about Coors Shore sign criteria.
Good morning, thank you. Item AW on the consent docket this morning is the policy guide for the Coors Shore reinvestment area. When we presented the Coors Shore TIF project plan to the City Council and the TIF Review Committee, we indicated at that time that we would be bringing forward a policy document that would help developers and others clearly understand how TIF dollars were to be allocated, what the criteria were to be, how the application process works, so that it's, so that they have adequate information to manage their expectations about, about the TIF process. So the presentation today, we're going to go through some of the objectives and goals of the TIF policy area, the allocation of TIF funds, the exceptions to the policy, and then Jeff Butler from the Planning Department is going to go through some of the density and design standards and the historic preservation standards that are a part of this policy. One thing I'll say is that we worked very closely, you can go to the next slide, it's okay, we worked very closely with the Planning Department in developing both the Coors Shore TIF project plan and this policy document. It's all very much driven by estimations of what the density will be in the area over the 25-year period for each of the TIF districts, and that density expectation is reflected in this policy guide. So just as a reminder, the Coors Shore reinvestment area budget totals $395 million. The largest portion of that is for assistance in development financing, which is the portion of the TIF funds that we allocate to private developers to help make projects happen. So that's why this policy guide is so important. The remainder of the funding is allocated to public improvements such as infrastructure, land acquisition, and then to each of the other taxing jurisdictions that are, that are made up of the TIF district. This is a map, just as a reminder, of the Coors Shore reinvestment area. It's broken into six separate TIF districts. Each will have its own 25-year time horizon. We have not started the clock on any of these TIF districts yet. The first one we anticipate to begin will be TIF District A, or the South CBD Central Park TIF District. This is the budgets by each of the different increment areas. Again, increment District A is anticipated to generate the largest amount of increment because it will have the highest level of density. And as you'll see in the policy guide, the density levels in this area range from, you know, 20 to 50 stories, where it's close to the Central Business District, to 8 to 15 along the, along the new MAPS 3 park. I'm not going to go through each of these goals and objectives individually. These are all stated in the, in the TIF project plan, but basically, the goal of the Coors Shore TIF is to obviously redevelop blighted and vacant property, to provide for an extension of the Central Business District down towards the river to create opportunities, to maximize the opportunities created by the MAPS 3 projects, including the Convention Center and the MAPS 3 Park, and to create other opportunities for significant amounts of housing, office, hotel, and retail space development in the area. Again, this is just more of the, more of the objectives, to develop impactful, well-designed private development along major public investments, to provide for a range of new opportunities, including different types of housing, the enhancement of Wheeler Park as a major recreational asset, the preservation of historic resources in the area, and finally, the transition of the Cox Convention Center into different functional uses after the completion of the new Convention Center. Each of the different TIF districts themselves also have goals, and again, we won't go through all of these individually, but they, again, focus on the redevelopment objectives of each of those specific geographic areas. So for example, in the South CBD Central Park area, the goal is to maximize the investment created by the MAPS 3 park and the Convention Center, and to make sure that we have high-quality mixed-use development around the park that will help ensure the success of the park in the future. So getting into the policy itself, we have several different areas of eligibility that are a part of this policy. This is where we've made a major, what I would say, a major departure from some of our TIF policies in the past. Each project will have to meet financial eligibility criteria, as well as design and density eligibility criteria. So, and under the financial portion of it, the project is difficult, but is made possible through a TIF allocation. They have to demonstrate that they have reasonable assumptions in their pro forma, and that the developer is not unduly enriched, that they don't receive a higher than, than conservative rate of return from their investment. These are the kinds of, this is the kind of review that we do on all of our TIF projects now, but we're trying to be a little bit more clear about how the money will be allocated and the amount of funding that they can expect to receive. One of the things about the financial portion of this policy is that we are going to try to use a program where we repay developers an incentive installment payment over time once the project is completed. So once the project is completed, we would maybe make payments over a 10-year period after that, instead of giving them a lump-sum payment once the project is completed. We hope that this will avoid the necessity of the city from borrowing money and incurring the interest expense, thereby actually reducing the amount of TIF, TIF dollars that are available to allocate in the future. The next area that the policy covers is design and density requirements that include minimum height, scale, massing, signage, and addressing the pedestrian zone, and there are also various historic preservation objectives. And finally, we go through the And finally, we go through the application process. This process is really the same process that we use for the downtown TIF and the Northeast Renaissance TIF and all of our other TIF districts, but again, it's articulated very clearly. We try to make sure that the, the developer understands what to expect as a part of the application process. So they have to present to us a project summary and a narrative describing the project, how it meets the city's goals, how it meets the objectives for the Coors Shore reinvestment area. They need to talk about the market and any of their assumptions. They also need to provide a financial summary and a pro forma that shows their sources and uses, their construction costs, a 25-year operating pro forma, income and expense assumptions, as well as debt assumptions. And finally, we, we like to see their construction drawings, at least in the preliminary stages, site plans, floor plans, and, and elevations of what they, they plan to do. This is a, a slide that depicts what the process is, and again, this is the process that we use on TIF projects now. Applications are submitted to the Economic Development Program Manager, which is Brent. Brent and I work together to review projects and discuss them. And these projects, the Economic Development and Planning Director will conduct an initial review. So on, on these projects, unlike some of our others, they will go to the Planning Department for a review of the design and density eligibility criteria. There's an initial review by the TIF Advisory Committee, which is an internal committee made up of city staff and staff from the Alliance. The developer makes a presentation. We then discuss the amount of TIF to be allocated and make a recommendation to the city manager. The city manager then, if he, he informs the TIF Review Committee of what his recommended amount of TIF allocation is. So then the TIF Review Committee meets, and they make a recommendation to City Council. So the TIF allocation is then considered by you, and finally, a economic development agreement is entered into, and that goes to the Economic Development Trust and the City Council for final consideration. So there's lots of opportunities for input and public, public input. The, the process typically can take a project two or three months to get through, depending on the complexity of the project. So again, the allocation guidelines for the financial eligibility, the project is difficult, but made possible with TIF. It's only eligible for amounts that are, that are supported by the incremental increase in property taxes that that project generates. Projects that are allocated a TIF, that receive a TIF allocation must make a minimum tax payment. This has been a requirement in most of our TIF agreements, or all of our TIF agreements for the last few years. So they are required to make a minimum tax payment, or a payment in lieu of taxes, to support the amount of allocation they've received. And then, as I mentioned earlier, a typical benchmark for the maximum allocation, well, actually, this is how we look at the amount that will be allocated to the project, is we look at the amount of property taxes that will be generated over a 10-year period, and that's, that, that would be the typical benchmark for the maximum amount of allocation that that project could receive. And the reason for doing this is that we need to generate increment for those projects of the other taxing jurisdictions and for the public infrastructure costs. So assistance in, in development financing will be provided in, in three ways. The installment incentive method, which is what I mentioned earlier, that will, that is the goal, is that, for that to be our primary method. The other option is the way that we do a lot of our allocations now, or have in the past, is a gap incentive, where they receive a lump sum after the project is completed. We have done some interest-bearing loans in the past, so that is another option we'll look at, but that the gap incentive and the loans are not possible until we've accumulated adequate increment. And so with a new TIF district, you don't have any increment for a couple of years. And some of them, we, it takes longer than that even. So, structure of TIF allocation, it'll be calculated, generate, based on the amount of increment to be generated. The straight-line installment would be an equal amount over a 10-year period, or we could do a stair-step installment, which means the developer could receive a, a larger amount in the first few years, and that amount would decline over time. It really will be something that will be negotiated on a case-by-case basis with each project. The policy also allows for some flexibility in allocating TIF funds for affordable housing projects. We really believe that affordable housing and workforce housing is going to be an important component of the, of the residential makeup in the Coors Shore area, and we've got to provide opportunities for developers to make that happen. So this policy directly addresses that, and, and hopefully, we'll see some, some good projects resulting from this. There are justifications for exceptions to the policy, and, and we recognize that especially in the early years, there may be the need to make some exceptions. Sometimes there's financing structural issues. There can be substantial costs incurred to meet the design eligibility requirements. There could be substantial costs to meet historic preservation requirements. A site may have some particular constraints that make it more expensive to develop, to develop on, and just generally, extraordinary costs can happen because of density or environmental problems, things like that. There's a process for requesting an exception, and again, it goes to the TIF Advisory Committee, and will be, will be addressed at the TIF Review Committee and at the City Council level. Finally, the, the last part of the presentation talks about the density and design standards, so I'm going to ask Jeff Butler from the Planning Department to come forward and explain those.
Jeff Butler, Assistant Planning Director. As Kathy mentioned, this, this is a relatively new, I guess we're, with this particular TIF district, it has a, has quite a bit of requirements related to design and massing and so forth, urban design, so that we can make sure that we get, when projects have TIF allocations, that they are meeting kind of the vision that's been established by the city for the, the downtown area, Coors Shore, and also the downtown framework that was adopted not too long ago. So the, first of all, we have the general urban design criteria. We have also a few sections in the, in the document that deal with the building itself and how it should be designed, the height, the structure, the massing, and so forth, and also the pedestrian zone, the, the area between the curb and the building face. And of course, all projects must meet the current zoning requirements, but these requirements would be in addition to those as a condition of receiving TIF money. So the general, just a few, I won't go through all of these components, but a few of the general urban design criteria, just for an example, for example, the stepped amassing for towers. We want to make sure that facades have architectural interest, and we want to maintain and extend the, the alley network for connectivity. Next slide, please. You'll see on the next slide, there'll be a map, and it'll show these, these building typologies, Central Business District, High Density 1, 2, and Medium Density 1 and 2, and Low Density. And for each topology, there are target criteria for land use, height, lock coverage, floor area ratio, and compatibility of the buildings. So this map shows each block within the area that we're under consideration in the Coors Shore area, and you'll see the Central Business District up on the north by the, by the park, by Meridian Gardens, and those have the highest building height requirement, so that's a range, 20 to 50 is the target range, with 20 being the minimum. And that's an example. You'll see they, they get lower as you go down towards the river, where the target range is more in the 3 to 5-story range. Here's an example from the policy document itself, that kind of, a, this one in particular is the high-density topology area, gives you the minimum target, minimum and target building height, and also some different criteria for what would be acceptable in that area. Another example, this would be medium density, so a little bit lower. This is the 3 to 5 stories, and different compatibility options for, for different building types. Scale and massing criteria, just another example of some of the design elements that we're looking for. So there's the primary structure and the secondary structure. The height actually applies to the primary structure itself. Secondary structures need to meet the minimum zoning, but they're not required to meet the, the range or the maximum, or the minimums established. Next slide, please. So here's a couple of illustrations, the primary and secondary, and different ways to do it. Finally, the HP, or the Historic Preservation Standards. We want to make sure that we have the ability to, to preserve the structures in the area that are, that are significant. So this is broken down into three categories. There are the preservation priorities. These are buildings that we really want to stay the way they are, to the extent humanly possible. So the TIF allocation will be available if the developer preserve the, preserves these buildings as much as possible, so no, no substantial modifications will be allowed. And then the second one would be the, the, kind of the next level down, so these are not as important. It would still be nice to have these, these preserved to the extent possible. So the city's Historic Preservation Officer would make a determination on the economic viability of preserving different features, and TIF allocation could be allowed. The third is the adaptive reuse, so these, this is encouraged, but not required. So there are some buildings that are not, they're, they have historic elements, and they may not be as historically important as those priorities in number one, but we would still like to see them preserved to the extent possible. Here's a quick map showing some of these, these priorities. So the buildings in red, for example, are the preservation priority, the highest priority buildings, where we would like to see them preserved.
Can you identify some of those by name, trying to preserve?
Just, just the ones that handy I've got here, the, the number one, they're the, or the, excuse me, number three, the Little Flower Church, so, there, there we go. Well, that's, that's the actual district. I'm not familiar with, with the actual buildings there, the preservation priorities. If I can get back to you on that, we can, I can send you something with the names of those. We've got, in the, in the document itself, has a little more information, some photos of, of the, several of those historic properties. So the, finally, there's a few, a few different ways that we just wanted to show, ways that you can be consistent with or preserve historic properties. You can't always preserve every, every brick and every interior wall. There are ways, such as the facade preservation, to, to still preserve the character. The next one would be building preservation, where, and here's an example from our downtown, where you're restoring the key historic structure, you're integrating the building into development as much as possible. There may be a few changes that are, that are necessary, but the, the main, the character is still, still preserved, and, and that's what we'd like to see. And finally, facade historic element integration, you know, kind of where possible, preserve the historic elements that are available, awnings, signage, just so that there's as much as possible, some of that historic fabric left over, if, if the building itself can't be completely preserved. I think that that, I'm going to turn it back over to Kathy for, for the last part of the discussion.
This last slide just kind of goes through the previous action that's been taken on this item. It was presented to the TIF, the Coors Shore TIF Review Committee on May 3, and they recommended it for approval. It was then presented to the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, and they also recommended it for approval, and that it'd go, go on to City Council for consideration.
Well, thanks.
I'd be glad to answer any questions, or...
I'm, I'm, I'm really encouraged by some of the new policies that we have. It seems like what we're trying to do is taking subjectivity out of it as much as possible and having more objective things, and I, I think that that's definitely going in the right direction, so.
I think the developers have really expected that, oh, sorry, I'm, yeah, I think the developers are, have asked for that in the past, to have a little bit more clear set of guidelines and criteria, so we hope that we'll be able to accomplish that.
Kathy, I was just going to add, I really respect and am excited by this continued refinement of the process. I think we get better and better every time, and the, the dovetailing of the objectives of the Planning Department and the vision set by all of the different design frameworks and things, to pull that together with TIF, I, I think is really a giant step forward, and I think we'll see great results directing the kind of development that we really want to see to, to accomplish the objectives that we've already set on the council.
Thank you.
I, I am convinced it's a very, very positive step to do this. This is, this is probably, with hindsight, it should have been done a long time ago, but it's, it's very, very positive, I think. I, I have one question about it. Does, do the standards that you set up in here for this particular TIF, are they applicable to, say, the balance of the TIF that's south of the river, the, the stuff that runs to 30th Street South?
No, this, this is just for the Coors Shore TIF area. We are looking at developing something for the downtown TIF district, and if, I think what you're talking about is the project area for the downtown TIF extends, I think we changed it to south of Southwest 29th now. So that, that's the project area. Typically, we kind of focus on the increment area, but we could certainly look at adopting some kind of standards for that area. I think, as Jeff mentioned, these requirements are slightly higher than what is expected in the downtown development framework. So in order to receive a TIF allocation, you have to do a little bit more than what is, is ordinarily required of you. So we'll have to look at how that fits in with some of those other areas where we don't have as many, where we don't have design guidelines, for example.
My thought is that that area that's south of the river that goes to 30th Street has a very, very high historic preservation component to it, especially along 25th Street, along Robinson, to some extent, perhaps on Walker, 29th Street. As someone that's tried to deal with the, the use of that downtown TIF funds there, it's often been a barrier not to have standards, not to, not to have a, a format to look at to say, is this, is this something we ought to do, or something we could do, or...
Right.
And I think it'd be extremely helpful to develop something very similar to this that would cover that area also, because that, that kind of guidance is really needs, especially in situations where it's, it's difficult to redevelop, because, for a lot of factors, a lot of absentee ownership, a lot of reasons, and it's, you have historic preservation questions, you've got different kinds of buildings, probably the last piece of a real main street left in Oklahoma City, that is that two-block, three-block stretch there. And it, it just really needs the kind of guidance setup that a set of rules like this would do. This is really good, though, Kathy, I'm, I'm impressed. Very good.
We'll take a look at 25th Street.
I'd like to thank everyone that was a part of this project. I am impressed also, and I think it's a very, very positive step.
Thank you.
Good. That's all the presentations?
That's all the presentations.
Okay. Well, I think Larry had an item that he wanted to talk about.
Three items I'd like to air, just very briefly, talk about AC, AD, and AM.
Councilman, I'd be happy to update on each of those. We do have three different projects that are included on the agenda today. The one that is item AC is actually residential resurfacing. It's part of our 2007 bond program. It's focused predominantly in neighborhoods that are west of Meridian and just south of Northwest 23rd. This is a change order that you're considering today. We are still exercising flexible starts with our contractors to help make sure that we're starting and completing projects on time. This work is expected to begin in September, and it will take just about a year to finish. It does include sidewalks. There's also asphalt milling and overlay, but in the areas that there are concrete streets, it does not completely remove the concrete. It will actually just do panel replacements and repairs to those. So that is item AC. Item AD is change order number two for the intersection improvements that were started at Southwest 15th and Calhoun. at Southwest 15th and Council Road. Now that work is done. This change order actually just takes care of some of the final quantities on the project, but I think the one thing to note on this one was it was a partnership project with Waste Connections. They had funded about 50% of the improvements at that intersection since they so travel that so regularly with the facility that's near there, but this project is nearly complete. And then the last item that I'll update is item AM. AM is an agreement with Necco Realty and Conley Paving to actually improve a portion of Tulsa Avenue just south of Northwest 10th. This is a road where both of those businesses actively use it for a lot of truck traffic. And the road was in not best of condition, but they've actually partnered with the city and what you have is an agreement to receive $45,000 to actually buy all the materials necessary to reconstruct that street. And it's actually going to be done with city forces and so that's the 50% partnership is the city's going to provide the labor. So with that today, this agreement will allow them to make that donation and then we will schedule that work as soon as our street crews are available this summer. So with that, those are the three items. Thank you.
Eric, can I ask you a general question related to that? You know, as someone that's been here a long time, I will tell you that the, there's only one thing I get more complaints about than the condition of the infrastructure and that is the length of time it takes to fix it. Once the, once the project gets started, then I get a lot more complaints from people saying, when's this going to be finished? I wonder, and I've got a couple in mind right now that are, that appear to be dragging on beyond what I think is reasonable frankly. The Anderson Road project that's south, extends south on Anderson Road from 40 and 240 and the project around the lake on the north end of Draper Lake. How long has it been since we analyzed the length of time that we give contractors to finish this? I know this comes up periodically and we say, well, if we shorten it, maybe we won't get as good a bid, but frankly, I don't know that we ever consider the cost of the delay. There are businesses south of Anderson, of 240 on Anderson Road that are virtually out of business now and have been for almost a year. It'll happen in some of the projects you were talking about here. It happened in 180 to a dramatic sense. I'd like to have us take another look at whether or not it's practical to shorten those contract times. If I saw somebody working on them every day, it'd be different. If I saw somebody working them on every other day, it would be different. But every other month seems to be a little bit of a, a long period of time to go between working on them. It's a question if it's, if it makes economic sense to keep doing what we're doing, I'll be there telling my constituents that when they call me. But I'd like to, I'd like another review of whether or not if that's economically sound. And I'd also like to consider the economic impact of the shutdown in that, in that analysis. I didn't mean to tag on to Larry, it doesn't really have much to do with it, but it does in a way because once this gets started, once these streets get started, I guarantee you'll get a call about how long it's taken because it just, that's the way, that's the nature of the beast.
Yeah, I think to just respond briefly, you know, we have made some pretty significant changes in the specifications that we issue now to the contractors. We are looking at the schedules, but we'll take another look at those. Some of the things that we put in as tools is we have, we have a three-day no-work requirement that if they don't work for more than three days, that they're subject to liquidated damages. So there may be a period of time where they, they don't work, but they're not allowed to walk off of the project without some sort of a penalty. I think you're also seeing that we're working with them on the critical projects. We know that there's high traffic and high volumes. We're actually doing some incentive pay to where it's not just a disincentive to be late, but we're incentivizing and that's what we actually changed on project 180, helping them not just meet their completion date, but actually accelerate construction by up to three weeks in some cases of those completion dates. But we're going to explore some additional contracting terms and things and we'll absolutely look at the timeframes again, too.
Well, I'm not, I don't, I don't mean to indicate that I think you guys aren't vigilant and don't do a good job. And I'm, as a general rule, I'm satisfied with the quality of the work we receive from our contractors. But it just seems to me it's, it takes an inordinate amount of time to do, and if it weren't for those down days that I are able to observe on a regular basis, I probably wouldn't say anything about it. But when you see days go by and you don't see any appreciable change at all, it's hard to defend that to a constituent who calls whose business is on that street and is virtually shut down because of it.
And unfortunately, in the last year, we have had to charge liquidated damages on a number of contractors finishing late, so we are exercising that as damage to the project. I do believe that they're, they're wanting to work with this and that's again, one of the reasons that we're having the flexible start dates, just like the other item that I mentioned. If they know they can't start it right after the contract is approved, but they can start it within 90 days, we're making sure that they get a fair start so that they can actually hit those completion dates and minimize the time actually in construction.
I think it may become even more important if, as we approach 2017 and talk about a MAPS program that is, as this, the article in the paper talked about it, being around residential streets and arterial streets as the keystone of it. I think we'll see a tsunami of problems if we don't try to get our arms around the length of time it takes to fix it.
We'll absolutely look at that. Thank you.
If liquidated damages are assessed against the contractor, is that contractor in any way penalized in the future for bidding on other projects?
You know, we do have a pre-qualification requirement that if a contractor's late on multiple projects, that they're subject to pre-qualification. In certain cases, we've actually suspended bidding on contractors that are having difficulty with schedules. It doesn't happen a lot, but we've done that, yes.
Thanks. Meg, did we get all your items?
We did.
We did? Okay. Okay. Well, I think we're ready to vote on the consent docket except for AV2, which we're going to vote on later. So is there any other comments before we vote? Okay, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to the consent docket. Concurrent docket? And do we get a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Does anybody have any comments on any, anything on the concurrent docket? All right, hearing then, we'll cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item nine, which are items requiring separate votes. The first item is an ordinance, an ABC in Ward 6. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a request for an ABC license in the Farmers Market District. How are you today? Good, I'm really glad you're here, Bud. Do you want to talk about this?
Absolutely, absolutely. Good morning, Council.
Thank you.
Bud Scott, attorney for applicants, John and Tevin Group, 1211 Southwest 2nd Street. This is an application for a standard ABC 2 overlay. We're looking at a restaurant, one of the newest additions down in the Farmers Market District area. Pretty straightforward, looking to get open here in August.
Well, we're really excited. This is, you know, another story where there was a food truck, successful food truck that has now taken a bricks and mortar space in the Farmers Market District. It's right across from Delmar Gardens and, you know, this council approved some time ago, the Power House, which has become an incredible anchor down there in the district.
We appreciate your support.
Excited to have the Loaded Bowl join the groups. I would move approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We're on to item A2, which is ABC 3 issued in Ward 4.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this matter? I move approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item 3 is an ABC, oh, it's another ABC 3 in Ward 4.
Again, is anyone here to speak in opposition to this matter? I move approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 4 is a PUD in Ward 4. Pete? And it looks like there's one person that's signed up.
Is the speaker in opposition? Are you in opposition to it? Well, if you have questions, come on, I'm not trying to limit conversation.
My name is Gary Vanoy. I live at 931 Southern View Drive. My property is toward the northeast corner there and abuts this property. My initial opposition at the onset was that the topography of the land, the back quarter of my property drains to the west across the property in question. There is going to be a berm put in and I have, I only wanted to voice an issue that I don't want this berm to interrupt that natural flow. I have talked to Mr. Brady, his representative here today, and he's assured me that it will not, but, and that was my initial issue and opposition.
Was this presented to the planning commission? Were you there at the planning commission and presented this? Actually, state law requires that he not change the natural flow. I realize that's an empty comment if he does it, but the state law requires that he not do that.
I totally understand and Mr. Brady's representative has been, and Mr. Brady himself has been very affable to assuring that won't happen. I just wanted that voiced.
Does staff have any concerns about this? It appears to have been vetted pretty well with the planning commission and through the representative of the applicant. We don't really have any comment. If there is a problem with the drainage, at some point he would contact Public Works and they'd go out and look at it. That's probably about the best we can do. I mean, the state law says he shouldn't do it or is not supposed to do it. You have, you have a civil cause of action if he does it, but before you exercise that, you probably, if something did happen, you'd contract our planning folks. This is a planned unit development and the fact is that we can, we can have some more control inside this planned unit development than we would in normal zoning cases. So if something happens, just feel very free to contract our planning folks and we can do the best we can to fix it.
I am satisfied, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I move approval.
All right, we cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 5 is a PUD in Ward 8.
Your Honor, this is an ordinance on final hearing. The property is to be changed from a agricultural district to a PUD. There was no opposition at the planning commission. I'm not aware of anybody in protest today, so I'd move for the approval.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9B is a PUD in Ward 7. It's got an amendment to the master design statement before we vote on the ordinance and I haven't.
So I've had an opportunity, I know that Councilman Pettis is in favor of this. There were no protests at the planning commission. It did pass unanimously. I believe the PUD document has been amended and the developers approved all the TEs. So I think we need two votes on this, so I would move the amendment to the master design statement.
Second.
Okay. Has anybody signed up to talk about PUD 1602?
Anything, John? Yes, I don't think so.
I don't believe so. Okay, well, let's cast our votes for the amendment. It passes unanimously.
Then I would move approval of the ordinance.
Okay. Cast your votes and that passes unanimously as well. All right, move on, moving on to item 9C, which is a PUD in Ward 2. I think this refers to Taff Stadium.
I think, I think I may be back on to this one. I see that the applicant's here, I've had an opportunity to meet with the applicant and I also had the opportunity to watch the full planning commission meeting at which this item was discussed. If nobody has any questions, there was, I think that protest was .47%. There was one legal protest on this. But as I took a look at it, this, I think it got most of its publicity for allowing beer and wine sales at the energy games, but it also involves, these TEs involve a number of other things, including facade regulations, landscape regulations, lighting, dumpster placement. It's a very comprehensive HUD and in watching the planning meeting, everybody was in favor of this, these amendments for the energy games specifically. So given that, I would move approval.
Okay. And do anybody else, did anybody show up to protest this?
I would move approval of the amendment to start with. We need two votes again.
Vote on the amendment first. Passes unanimously.
And then I would move the ordinance.
Okay. Cast your votes again and that passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item D, which is a closing of an alley in Ward 4. Pete, you okay with this?
I see that the applicant did not amend it to place a historical marker to the Southside Mafia, but despite that, I'll go ahead and move approval.
Okay. All right, cast your votes and that passes unanimously as well. Item E is a public hearing regarding our bike share program.
And Jason gave a presentation on this two weeks ago, so this is a public hearing process.
Anybody sign up to talk about it? Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? No? Okay. Cast your votes and that moves forward. Item F is our sign ordinances for Bricktown and that's just being introduced today. So somebody got that?
Lisa Cronister is here to just go over the next two items for us.
Yes, good morning. Lisa Cronister with the planning department. When, as Mr. Couch was saying, when, these are two separate ordinances, but I'm going to discuss them together. When they went through the public process with the Bricktown Urban Design Commission and the Planning Commission, they were combined into one ordinance, but later we were asked by the councilor's office to separate them into two. So informationally, they are the same thing, they've just been broken out into parts. We're talking about Bricktown. The Bricktown ordinance design guidelines are, other than HP, they're the oldest design guidelines we have in the urban core. We, the, so today marks a solid two years that we have been integrating updated design concerns. Since the downtown development framework was adopted last summer, we've worked to integrate all of its guidelines into the code so it's more identifiable and easier to enforce. The work into chapter three involved, right now, some of the Bricktown signed guidelines are in chapter 59, some are in chapter three. We've moved them all to chapter three, so they're all in one place, easy to find. There's been very few actual changes other than moving them. One of the changes is to further define when EMD signage is appropriate and for Bricktown, we're proposing that it's appropriate at spectator sports and entertainment venues. The downtown development framework identified Bricktown into two areas, so we're not changing a legal boundary. The overall legal boundary remains the same, but it identified an area of east Bricktown and an area of west Bricktown. And that was to recognize that west Bricktown is the historic core of the district and that the east, that the east side has almost unlimited growth potential and so that the regulations and guidelines for each of those areas needed to recognize that. For example, for the bulk regulations for west Bricktown, the minimum height is three stories, but in east Bricktown, the minimum height is four stories. The maximum overall allowed height remains the same as it is in the current guideline, which is 140 feet. Development regulations, a lot of this information was moved from other sections and reorganized. It talks about building frontages, that buildings are ad or within the street right of way, that, you know, materials like vinyl siding, sheet metal siding are not appropriate, not allowed in downtown. Believe it or not, sidewalks were not, are not required in the current ordinance, but obviously that is a critical part of good urban design. We are, for uses, we're deleting artistic graphics. We want to do that for some of the other zoning districts also because it's been extremely hard for the, for users and our office to interpret the difference between artistic graphics and murals, so we're just going with murals. The past year in front of planning commission and city council, there's been several SPUDs to allow communication antennas because they weren't otherwise in allowed use. So we're putting that in because it's necessary. Another change is right now in Bricktown, ABC 3s, which are- Another change is right now in Bricktown, ABC3s, which are bars and taverns, ABC3s is allowed by right. You don't have to have any other approvals to put in a bar or tavern. That's unique to all of the city. Other property owners, the Bricktown Association, the committee has asked for, if there's a way we could integrate some more of the public process, and so we propose to do that by requiring an ABC3 overlay. That's what you have to get in any other part of the city. ABC1 and ABC2 would still be allowed by right, just like it is in downtown, for example, but ABC3 would require an overlay. That would give adjacent property owners, other business owners in the area, an opportunity to voice concerns about noise, traffic, crime, what they, they don't have a good opportunity to do now. It would not affect existing bars and taverns. If you have an existing bar and tavern, nothing is changing for you, only new businesses. Design guidelines, we integrated, again, from the downtown development framework, everything about, you know, pedestrian zones, sidewalks, street trees, suggested when historic signage needs to be kept or recreated, that trash room should be integrated and located off the alleys. And we further defined when, you know, what material guidelines are appropriate for new construction and what are appropriate when we're talking about renovations to existing buildings. And that is it. Answer any questions?
I just want to say thank you to the planning staff and also thank you to the Bricktown Design Review Committee. This is something that they have asked for, for quite a while. So thank you again to the Bricktown Design Review Committee and also to city staff. Thank you.
All right. So this is introducing the ordinance. The public hearing is going to be set for August 2nd and then a final adoption is, will be on August 16th.
Thank you, Lisa, for the restriction on LED signs to sporting events. Appreciate that.
All right. Cast your votes on item F1. That passes unanimously. And then we need a motion on F2. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to item nine G, which is our dilapidated structure list. Oh, we have one person that's signed up. Cliff Higgs.
I represent the property owner. That building is not abandoned. It's just the garage is shared with the unit next to it. We've been unable to communicate with the property owner next to us. We're in agreeance that we'll bring it down and haul it off, but I was hoping that the other property owner was here. It's the next item on the agenda so that I could communicate with him regarding sharing the cost of that.
Okay.
So help me, can I start over? I didn't realize I was in Ward six. I'm sorry. I wasn't paying enough attention. My problem. Talk to me about this again. This is next door to you? Or is this your property?
This is our property. We're in the process of renovating it, but it's a, it's a almost 100-year-old, four-unit apartment complex. There's actually four structures that are identical. We share a garage with the structure next to us. They are, it is dilapidated. It does need to come down. We have plans to do that, but we've tried to communicate with the owner of the property next to us as it's a shared garage and we've been unable to contact them or communicate with them.
Charles, do we know anything about the next door property owner? Do we have any information?
The two, the two structures that we have, one are both owned by the same owner, the two houses that connect this.
Yeah. This, the deed was just recorded on Friday. We purchased this at Sheriff's Sale a few months ago. So the property owner is, now according to the county, does currently reflect that we own it.
But you own the property?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you know, my concern and our overall concern is safety.
Yes.
And it's dangerous.
Yes.
So my recommendation would be that we leave this on, but we won't demolish as long as you're working with Charles.
We have both of them, what he's speaking, and we have both of them on today.
Okay.
Yes. It's next on the agenda, the property adjacent to ours.
Okay. Well, can we kind of lump this conversation together? We'll leave everything on as is, but as long as you stay in communication and we know you're working on it, then everything will be fine.
Okay.
But it is, to me, it looks like a real safety issue, so work fast, okay?
Definitely. Share well. Thank you.
All right. I think we're ready to vote. Do we need a motion? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then item H, the unsecured structures. Anybody sign up for that one?
Yes.
All right, we did. Kelly Parker.
Good afternoon. I'm Kelly Parker. I am appearing on behalf of Wells Fargo Bank on item H1L. It is also listed on I1N 12508 with Spring Hollow Drive in Ward eight. Wells Fargo is, is just the lender on the property. They're not currently the owner of the property. It appears that the owner has vacated the premises and it is currently in foreclosure. Wells Fargo is just, was requesting additional time in order to submit any insurance claims that are necessary and to allow the opportunity for any insurance adjusters to view the property as is, to determine whether it's something that can be an insurable claim or it is something that Wells Fargo will have to step in on their own and secure the property. We are happy to work with the city in coordinating whatever is quickest and cheapest to get the property secured. We do understand that an open property is a dangerous one, but they do need the opportunity to allow the insurance adjuster to view the property if it is something that can be, can be resolved through an insurance claim.
Where are we at on the insurance process?
That I have not been able to confirm at this point. I know Wells Fargo has said that, that within the last, I believe, 60 days, they initiated the process. I do not know as to whether they've got a claims adjuster that is to view the property or is currently scheduled to view the property.
I don't mind leaving it as is for now, but just if you could find out, if there is an insurance claim, if it's going to be submitted and let Charles know and communicate with, please.
Okay. Perfect.
Thanks. Guess we need a motion?
Let it stay on the list for now. Yeah.
So you're moving the whole list?
Except for that one, correct?
You want to leave it on the list?
Yeah. Okay. Sorry about that. I'm confused.
I'm sure it's my fault. All right. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now to the abandoned buildings list. Anybody new sign up for that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Can we go back to the consent docket item?
Right, now? Okay. We are going to go back to that, the one consent docket item that we pushed to the end. It's AV2, so I'll need a motion. Cast your votes and that passes unanimously. Okay. And then item J, we're removing properties from the abandoned building list. Need a motion?
No. Second.
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then item K, our budget was so good, we decided to vote on it twice, so. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item L, I don't think we need executive session. Oh, this is, we have people signed up and it's in Ward three, and so I think probably Kenny and/or Larry maybe could explain it before we start hearing from people.
Yes. To give you an overview, most of you know about this, a couple of you don't. This is a case that is, there's a plot of land out in far western Oklahoma City by Simran Road and Northwest 10th. And there's been going on out there, according to our legal research and what the municipal councilor's office has determined, illegal dirt moving going on, which has caused a significant disruption and adversely affected the neighborhood because of this illegal mining activity. And it goes as illegal mining. And on Tuesday, July 5th, we convened a meeting down here where we had a number of the municipal councilor's office, including Kenny himself. We had the head of inspection, Charles Locke, was there, and we had a number of the neighbors who are here also today to discuss the issue. And from that, a solution that is legally possible was developed. And Kenny, I'll let you, if you would, explain what the proposal is and why we're proposing what we're doing.
Right. There are currently two citations pending in municipal court for this, and we're not going to dismiss those cases, so those are still pending. The defendant can obviously go in and pay those if they, if he wants to, but we're not dismissing them. So those are going to go on. On, we were also going to file an injunction against the activity. However, apparently, Mr. Pogue met with two of his attorneys on Thursday, actually three attorneys Thursday, and from what I gather from the report from David Box, he and Dennis met with him and also another attorney that represents him, and I think they have convinced him that he needed to stop the mining activity. And that is a report I got from, back from David based on that meeting, that he is ceasing operations immediately and also Bob Teener drove past there over the weekend on Sunday, he said, and there was no activity. He said he'll need approximately five days to level the soil that was disturbed, but no additional soil will be removed from the site. And so based on that, I wrote up an amendment to the resolution that's before he today that basically would say, would reflect that, that he's going, ceasing operations immediately and going to level the site over about five working days and then, so we would not be suing him immediately in court. But the amendment I wrote says that if he were to begin operations again, and he actually has a state mining permit, a non-coal mining permit, if he were to begin operations again, we would file suit immediately. Also, the residents out there have, have the opportunity themselves to directly file suit, and I think they were going to, if the city was going to. I don't know if they're, they're going to go ahead and do that, but, but basically, that was my recommendation that based on his, that he has stopped activity, that we not sue him immediately.
But that if he were to start?
Right.
Immediately, we will file for an injunction in District Court against him.
Correct.
And that is, correct me if I'm wrong, the only legal way that we know that we can stop this operation.
The only way you can stop it, right, is to be in District Court. We can cite him on a daily basis if he keeps doing it, but the only way you can actually stop it, the municipal court can't issue an injunction or anything.
So this solution right here is set up to stop the operation, but to give him five days to do some remedial work on the site and then he's not able to do any more mining on that site, period, or we're going to file an injunction. Now, there is no guarantee that the District Court will grant us our injunction when we go before him. Is that not correct?
No, there's no guarantee.
But that's, that's our legal recourse.
Right. He did have a, does have, actually has a state mining permit and we tried to get the Department of Mines at the state to take some action and they said, no, we, we're not going to take any action to stop it. So that's where we, that's where we were.
So the ball is in our court and we have here, I think, a very good solution. Now, a number of people have signed up. Has anybody signed up that's opposed to that solution that we just outlined? Who wants to speak? Or anybody just want to speak? Call the people then.
My name's Warren Lowe. I'm an orthopedic surgeon at the McBride Orthopedic Hospital. I live on Simran Road on an adjacent quarter section to Mr. Pogue's, excuse me, illegal mining operation, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the West Yukon neighbors. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Councilman McAtee and the entire City Council for allowing us to be heard this morning. I'm especially grateful for Mr. Boyd Fulton in Mr. McAtee's office, who is a remarkable public servant, who has exhibited exceptional patience, poise, and kindness to us. Also, Municipal Counselor Kenneth Jordan has been a model of availability, responsiveness, and follow-through, and we appreciate his efforts. His associates, Charles Locke, Daniel Brummett, Susan Randall, Laura McBevitt, and Laura Yates, have all been representations of graciousness, compassion, and integrity. Mr. McAtee has been an illustration of the servant-hearted public official acting with grace to those he leads. On behalf of all the West Yukon neighbors, we applaud the sincerity with which you all carry out your charge. I've cut out about 10 pages of my little speech here, so I'll just get to the point. Mr. Pogue has declared his intent to cease all mining operations immediately and to smooth the surface of the land. If, as stated, it is truly Mr. Pogue's intention to cease his illegal dirt mining operation, the City Council authorizing and instructing the municipal councilor's office to file for a temporary restraining order and injunction to ensure that Mr. Pogue does not resume his mining operations, will not harm Mr. Pogue in any way. Mr. Pogue will not be restricted from using his land in any manner he desires, and Mr. Pogue does not even need to incur attorney fees. He can simply not contest the matter. However, if the City Council does not authorize and instruct the municipal councilor's office to file for a temporary restraining order and injunction until Mr. Pogue resumes his dirt mining operation, the city and its citizens will suffer injury again. For this reason, we respectfully request that the City Council instruct the municipal councilor's office to file for a temporary restraining order and injunction immediately. We have not found Mr. Pogue to be truthful or straightforward or forthcoming in his dealings with us, and he has repeatedly violated his commitment to take care of the land. In one day, in one seven-day period alone, he had over 1,000 large earth-moving trucks taking large loads of dirt up and down Simran Road and disturbing, obviously, the peace of the neighborhood. Thank you very much. We appreciate everybody's efforts and our group has been totally amazed at the responsiveness, the friendliness, the courtesy that we have been shown by everyone in the city government, in the city attorney's office, and actually even at the Department of Mines, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask Kenny a couple of questions then. Is what, what the citizens are suggesting here something that can be done today at this meeting?
Yes. We, if he didn't amend our resolution the way I suggested and just went ahead and passed it, you'd be directing us to file a lawsuit. If that's the will of the council, we, we would be glad to do that. I'm not sure exactly how the court will view that because we'll have to tell them, well, he's in compliance as of today, but we still want you to go ahead and issue a temporary restraining order to keep him from recommencing operations. It's never, never faced that situation before, so I'm not exactly sure how the court will view that, and you never can tell. Mr. Pogue might decide that he wants to fight it at that point and we might actually have to litigate it, so.
And so when is the last date that we know that he was, he was mining?
I don't know. I don't know the last date specifically, but I think it was, it'd be a pure guess. It would be probably Thursday, the... It would be probably Thursday. Dr. Lowe may know.
It was the 30th, last day of July 14.
July 14.
And that, right, that was, would have been the day he met with his attorneys, and they talked him into stopping.
Okay.
I apologize to the council, because I did not know about this until Dr. Lowe just walked up.
You didn't know about what?
The fact that the way that it was written was not acceptable to everybody.
Okay. Well, it sounds like it is acceptable, other than the amendment. Is that right?
The only thing I would say about, if we proceed with a temporary injunction when he's not doing anything, courts don't grant temporary injunctions very easily. And so, if we go over there and shoot ourselves in the foot, and he says, I'm not doing anything, and it's denied, we've kind of wasted our time. And he's agreed to stop. We've given him five days. On the sixth day, if he's doing something wrong, we'll file it immediately, and we have a much better chance of prevailing in front of the district judge.
Mr. Stone, sir, is a lawyer, by the way, folks. And I'm not.
Okay. Well, I agree with Mark.
I think it'd be a mistake to ask for an injunction when he stopped. I think we'd just be asking for, to taint the case in a way that a judge might not really like that. I mean, a restraining order is to restrain you from doing something. If you're not doing it, then it flies in the face of the whole idea of asking for a restraining order. I think the five-day provision is the best protection you can get, and also give him the opportunity to clean it up, which is something I would think that you would want. However, if the, I'm going to defer to Larry. Whatever he wants to do on this is going to be fine with me, but I think as a practical matter, the five-day delay is warranted. I think it makes good sense.
Yeah, I'll also defer to you, Larry, on what you want to do, but more importantly, I think that if he breaches his agreement during that five-day period, it gives them a lot better evidence.
Yeah. Mr. Washington, you need to sit down.
I thought you said this.
You aren't signed up to speak on this item.
So, as I read the amendment, it would allow us to file that injunction immediately without having to come back to council?
I think the intent of what we're talking about here is the fear that he is not going to follow this, and is going to do it, and we're not going to come along afterwards and file for the injunction, which I've tried to tell them, we are committed to filing for the injunction if he violates the five days or tries to resume at any time. Based on that, I'm going to go out on a limb and recommend that we adopt what's been presented right here with the amendment in there. I move for approval.
Second.
And I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable that if he violates this, I don't care whether it's the first day, the second day, or the third day, we're in the courthouse.
That's what I'm telling them, and that's what we're committed to, right, Kenny?
I will file a lawsuit. We basically have it drafted, ready to go, so we'll file it immediately. And I believe Dr. Lowe's son is an attorney, and he was going to represent the neighbors, and they were going to file too. And if we do have to file a lawsuit, I strongly encourage the neighbors to go out there, because I've been representing the city in court on these cases against landowners for a long, long time. And we're always better off if the neighbors are actually parties to the lawsuit too than just the city. So, that's a good idea.
And I have a lot of people that have signed up, so I don't want to not allow them to speak if they still, if they do want to speak. Is there anybody else that wants to speak before we vote? I can read through the names if you want me to, but it doesn't look like anybody does. So, we have a motion to approve the amendment.
And thank you for your interest in coming down. And I hope you're satisfied with this, and we'll go.
Just clarification. Yours is on the resolution that was presented in the packet on Friday, or on the amendment?
This is the amendment. This is to amend the resolution.
I move the amendment.
Okay. Cast your votes, and it is approved unanimously. And then, do we need to vote again on the resolution? Okay. So I need to look for a motion for that. Pass, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. Moving on to item N, and I don't think we need an executive session.
Correct.
So, we'll look for a motion.
Second.
Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item N, we do not need executive session, so I'll look for a motion. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 9O is claims recommended for denial. Has anybody signed up for this? Is anybody here wanting to speak on any claims recommended for denial on item O, 9O?
Move the item.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Moving on to item 10A, which are claims recommended for approval. Look for a motion. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Moving on to item 11, items from council. The first item is travel expenses.
We need to hear Larry's.
Oh, okay. Can I just move that to the end? Okay, we'll move that one to the end when Larry returns. And Mark, you got anything?
I do briefly, Your Honor. The Walnut Creek Homeowners Group is having a meeting Thursday, July 21st, at 7:00 PM. For those of you who don't remember, Walnut Creek had the house with the gas explosion back in January of this year, where a house was completely destroyed. Luckily, there was no loss of life. The meeting on Thursday night is our second meeting with this homeowners group, and what we are going to discuss is the status of where the investigation is, representatives from ONG, the State Insurance Commission, the State Corporation Commission, and OKC Code. Charles Locke came last time and did a fantastic job. And so, I just want to encourage all the homeowners in Walnut Creek to attend this meeting. It will be very informative.
Joe?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank everyone who attended the Black Lives Matter rally in March that was held a few days ago. It was a very, very great event. There were not only African-Americans there, but also a mixed group of people. And I see the organizers are here, and just want to say thank you for a job well done. And I also thank Chief City and Major Jennings, because of the police department and other law enforcement agencies did a very excellent job as well. So, thank you.
I'd just like to echo those comments. I was out of town that weekend, but I was following really closely the conversation on social media on Twitter. I was so proud of Oklahoma City. It was really handled incredibly well, and lots of thanks to the organizers. I also really want to say thank you to the citizens of Oklahoma City. I have received so many email messages and phone calls of people reaching out to ask how they could help our police department, you know, did we need additional supplies, all kinds of things, that just so reflect the way this community feels about our police force. And it's been really heartening to see how the community has come together in Oklahoma City. Thank you, everybody, for being involved.
Pete, you got anything? City manager reports.
We've got a couple. Let's start with Mary Margaret Jones is here to talk about our MAPS 3 park.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here, and this is an update, so there's no action item today, as you know. I'm happy to give you an update of where we are. And this will be both the upper and lower park. And I don't think I've presented, I don't think we've presented the lower park to you at all in the past. So it's sort of a summary of the upper park and filling you in a little bit on the lower park. So we'll talk about program, we'll talk about design, and we'll talk about cost and schedule. Always harking back to Quarter Shore Framework Plan. I was so happy to see the presentation by Kathy earlier, and to see that all of these visions of this are starting to come together and be realized, not just envisioned. And thinking about the open space network that is part of Quarter Shore, and really this loop that goes through Bricktown, down the river, and up again into downtown. So it really is a loop of water and green open space connections that will be happening after this. And I have to say, last night, flying in, for some reason, my plane circled downtown, which I've never done, and the view was, first of all, stunning. It was a beautiful night. But this park is big. Because right now, it's empty, so you see it. And this is, it's really cool. This will put Oklahoma City on the map.
You probably should have noticed that earlier.
Well, I did, but I've never seen it from that vantage point. Of course, it looks extra big, because the site is empty, too. That was the previous site of the convention center, so that makes it look extra big. Okay, we also constantly look back at our public process and what we heard in our public process. And we got over 1,600 survey results in person and in writing, which is a lot for any city, and something to be proud of. And we got this feedback back in these categories. And I think it's pretty interesting to note that under special features, River Edge Boardwalk was one of the top responses. And thus, the lower park study was done, and thus, the River Edge study was done as well, which is not yet a MAPS project, a future project, we hope, but something people really want. So it was important for us to think about it. These were early diagrams we did, looking at those sort of connections and the future possible context. So now, understanding the context we have of mixed use to our north, the convention center to our east, development to our west, as Kathy was describing earlier, and then continuing on down to the river, and the connections to Marriott Gardens, Devon Tower, and downtown, and how important they are. And thinking about how that informs the design of the park. So from the downtown side, it means you want the kinds of activities that speak to the urban core. From the east and west, on the east and west sides, on the east, we want to address the sort of major civic component of a convention center and the many visitors who will be coming to the city. And on the west, neighborhood. So very different contexts, east and west. And then, of course, from the south, the river. So looking at design, you may remember some of the really early concepts. We looked at whether or not all the programs should be concentrated at the north end, or whether it should be dispersed. And the direction, working with the park's subcommittee, was really to disperse program throughout the park, but to transition as you get closer and closer to the river, so that it is more and more about nature and about being near the river. So it's a mix of dispersion and concentration. It's really nodes throughout the park. Lots of things to do, something for everyone, from the great lawn, the Big Oval, that will hold thousands and thousands of people for a big event but feel good day-to-day, to the lake, to the woodlands, to the interactive fountain, to all the landscape that encompasses all of this. And in the south park, the lower park, community gardens, nature walks, and multi-use fields. And that's something that I remember from the very beginning. It was, many people wanted fields, playfields, you know, structured playfields in the upper park, and the decision was made that that was really more appropriate in the lower park. So here we are now, at that time of realizing that vision. So focusing on the upper park a little bit, it's 38 acres. It has, of course, Union Station, and of course, the hope is very much that Union Station will be a participant in the park. It has great opportunity for weddings, for a permanent venue for food and beverage, as well as support facilities for the park. There is, of course, the Big Oval. There's the Urban Gardens at the north end, the café at the north end along the boulevard, and learning many lessons of how to make a café work. The lake, the boathouse, and then the skate pavilion, the roller skate pavilion, near Robinson, near Union Station, and then, of course, connecting to Skydance Bridge. This is, the idea is to have sort of many destinations, many unique areas within the park. This 560,000 projected visits, we think is annual visits, we think is very low. That's a very conservative estimate. We think it could easily be a million people a year. Then looking at the lower park, fewer destinations, a smaller size, 34 acres, and again, much more about sort of meandering through a natural landscape. You'll still have the continuation of the promenade. So just to back up for a second, you see the promenade coming down in the big gracious arc that connects to Skydance Bridge. Then you go over Skydance Bridge, and you continue on that promenade right to the river. In this drawing, you see what you're connecting to is the existing River Edge, the existing River Park. Along the way, you have the multi-use fields adjacent to the Latino Community Development Agency. You have stormwater wetlands that are collecting and cleaning the water on the site. You have community gardens. And you have a small oval. So you go from the Big Oval to a small oval, and the small oval is adjacent to the river. It has a landform that allows you to get up and see the river. In the upper park, you have a landform that allows you to see downtown. In the lower park, you have a landform that allows you to see the river and stage informal performances. So it all comes together in this fashion, looking from the air, almost like my plane was, a little lower than my plane was. But you see it all beginning to come together. And these are some of the views. This is the upper park, from the great lawn, from the Big Oval, from the hill that frames the Big Oval, looking back to downtown. You see the stage structure in the distance that is designed to handle many scales of events with as little infrastructure need as, to be added as possible, as much as built-in as possible, including a green room, and restrooms, and storage, and electricity. And then to the left, just to the left of Devon Tower, you see the lower vertical feature, and that's the café and the outdoor fireplace that will be part of the café, and it will be lit like a beacon at night. Then you see the café in the background here, and the Urban Gardens to the left along the boulevard, games, activities along this downtown end of the park. Now you're under the overhang of the café, looking into the gardens. The café will be as much an outdoor experience as an indoor experience. And then, as you move into the park, you go into the woodland gardens. And the woodland gardens have these series of destination gardens. Some of them are dry and open and sunny and lawn. Some, like this one you see in this image, are actually collecting and polishing stormwater from the site, which is stored in the lake and then reused as irrigation on the site. So it's a very good sustainability story, as well as nature story. So from that same hill, where we were looking downtown previously, now we're looking over the lake and toward Union Station and towards Skydance Bridge. And you see the sort of romance of the lake, and you see some of those destination gardens, those lenses, if you will. The interactive fountain, of course, this is a key of any successful urban park, a place for children of all ages to interact with water. And the water progresses in size from small and kid-friendly to larger and more visually dramatic as you enter downtown. The children's play area in the upper park is arranged, designed to accommodate everything from toddlers to 12-year-olds in different areas, as well as gardening and having children's garden and learning from that. So many, many different features, including features for kids of all abilities, and including adults. There is, I should have said, there's also an area of adult fitness. And then the boathouse. The boathouse will be a place to get a sandwich and a beer, and go get in a boat, and paddle around the small lake on Friday afternoons. You can certainly imagine sitting there and having this view towards Skydance Bridge and Union Station, under the shade structure. And then, Union Station itself, turning the vehicular drop-off in front of Union Station, on the north side of Union Station, into a plaza, a spill-out space for a restaurant, a beer garden perhaps would be a great in this market, a great feature in this market, are the many weddings that we think will happen here. And I should say that in working with the people running Marriott Gardens, Maureen and Jim, we have made sure that there are features throughout the upper park, that they know work in Marriott Gardens, and of which they need more, and that includes places for weddings. So that's a big feature and an income generator for Marriott Gardens, and will continue in the upper park. Moving to the lower park, you see the sports fields and the play pavilion that will be adjacent to the sports fields. And then the, sitting under it, getting the view in the other direction, in the shade, out to the play fields. And then the community gardens. There is a great interest in community gardens and urban agriculture. So there will be some of that, and it can increase over time if there's a real demand for it. It starts modestly in the lower park, with a facility where there could be cooking classes. You know, there will be a place to turn that into a learning experience, educational experience. And then the Small Oval. The Small Oval with the hill that looks toward the river, and a small stage that will be a great venue for cultural performances. We heard from the Latino Development Agency facility that they would love a place to have more dance and more dance performances. And this, of course, is really close to Manny Perez Park, so the adjacencies will work out very well. Cost and schedule. So this is the upper park. You see, our budget is... You see, our, our budget is, and our construction costs are very much in alignment, both just under fifty-nine thousand, fifty-nine million, sorry, fifty-nine million dollars, yes. So, but spread over the square feet, that's only thirty-six dollars a square foot. And I have to say, that is one of the more modest parks we've done in terms of cost per square foot. Not because we overdesigned, but because that's what it takes to take on this many acres, clean it, do the demolition, do the infrastructure, do the utilities, set this up. The reason we're able to do it for thirty-six dollars a square foot is because so much of it is a natural landscape, because it is a large park. Marriott Gardens was well in excess of this per square foot, but because it's smaller and more concentrated and more program-rich over every square foot.
Can you give me an example of Millennium Park?
Oh, Millennium Park would have been a hundred and fifty, if not two hundred dollars a square foot.
Wow.
Yeah, so, so much more. Particularly when you think of, for instance, the Bean, the big sculpture was twenty million dollars in itself.
Right, well, if you put the artwork in there, that doesn't count.
Yeah, without that.
Take out the artwork.
Easily a hundred, a hundred and fifty, even to two hundred dollars a square foot for a very urban, concentrated park.
I was interested in how robust the café was.
Yeah.
As an, I mean, that's a full-fledged fancy restaurant.
Exactly. And Discovery Green as well. The Grove Restaurant is very, very popular. And I should remind all of you, mention that all of this, the construction of the park comes with revenue generation projections that will come from the café, boat rental, the whole range of things, membership groups, birthday parties, you know, corporate outings, et cetera. In, in the lower park, we are also, the budget and the cost projection, of course, we're not as far along in the lower park. The upper park is nearing ninety-five percent completion, construction drawings, so we have really tight cost estimates for the upper park. The lower park is still more general, but we are projecting a cost and will do a park that is on budget. But notice the cost per square foot there. It's down to twenty dollars a square foot. That's very low. And there are a couple of things that go along with that that I know the Park Subcommittee is quite concerned about. In order to hit that budget target, much of the park, some of the park will not be irrigated, for instance. And that's, I think, a concern. So as we go forward in the lower park, we'll be looking at ways to, to deal with that. In terms of schedule, the upper park, again, here we are in July, nearing ninety-five percent CD completion, a hundred percent in August, bid approval of that, and then bid in October. And then, and of course, the tree package is already happening, so in a way, and as you see, demolition is already happening, so the project is underway. And then the lower park, we will be back to you for approval of preliminary design package, a PDR package, in October. So we'll have more on the lower park at that time. Any questions? Comments?
I don't have any. Anybody else have some?
Great.
Yeah, it looks good.
Thank you very much.
Since all six of us are here, maybe we should vote on the item 11A. Does anybody have any objections to that? All right, cast your votes. It's approved. Okay?
And Chris Varga is here. He's been working on abandoned housing for a while, and Larry McAttee's been working on abandoned housing for a while, and we're making some progress. It's, as we all know, I think, we've talked about this a lot, it's a tough issue. And there's some recommendations with that. Chris?
Hi. Chris Varga from the Planning Department. Today, I'm here to convey to you the report that the Abandoned Building Coalition put together, a summary of some of the issues that they looked at and their recommendations. I wanted to give you a little bit of background on that, just to let you know how we even got to a coalition stage. I think the conversation about abandoned buildings started in earnest when the city in 2011 contracted GSBS Richmond Consulting to give us a snapshot of what's going on with the abandoned buildings in our community, a sense of how many there were, the kind of cost that those incur for the city, and the recommendations for moving forward. This kind of started some of the actions that council subsequently took to pass ordinances in 2013 and again revisions in 2014. And because of our city's interest and leadership in this issue, we were selected, invited to a community progress leadership institute. It was sponsored by the Center for Community Progress. And that's an agency that is a nonprofit national agency with their mission, goal, and focus on revitalizing vacant, abandoned, or other problem properties. So it was an exclusive invitation. We were one of eight or ten communities that were invited to participate. We sent a delegation to, it was held at the Harvard Law School. And upon return, one of the recommendations from those delegates was that we establish forming a coalition of stakeholders to further look at the issue. So that is the origin and why we established a coalition in 2015. For the coalition membership, we extended our invitation to participate to a broad group of stakeholders. We wanted neighborhood leaders to be a part of it, real estate brokers, investors, state county officials that have programs that are impacted by the issues. We met monthly over a period of about six months to look at the issues and review best practices that were being implemented in other communities. After review of a lot of the information, and it is a very complex problem with a lot of complicated solutions, we reviewed certain topics such as changes to property tax laws, long-term solutions, setting up abatement funds or trust funds that would help in revitalization of the properties, strategic demolition approaches, various receivership authorities, tax incentives, and land banking opportunities, all of which are fairly, many of which are fairly complex, take a fair amount of money to implement and would require, in most cases, statutory changes that may or may not be feasible in our current climate. So the board refocused their attention on shorter, short-term goals, viable goals that they thought could be implemented primarily with process changes. And since their support was drafted, some of these process changes already have been initiated. But there are five recommendations. The first recommendation was the administrative and regulatory fee system to be re-looked at, the census that we're not recapturing the amount of expenses that we are expending on the problem, to form analysis of the fee structure and review any kind of legal options for additional recovery if, if we actually were to perform an abatement of abatement costs. And I know that we are planning, the city is planning, an administrative fee study to be conducted in the near future. Our second, the second recommendation dealt with strategic code enforcement, focusing on more proactive engagement with community, perhaps prioritizing specific neighborhoods or areas for review, to engage the citizens, the citizens and the neighborhoods in trying to be a part of the solutions and trying to put priorities on the properties that they're having issues with and to deal with their neighbors. And more coordination, which we already have, a significant amount of coordination with our code enforcement and our citizenry, but even more so, some communities are experiencing. And then more information sharing with the public about the status of the program. We do have some process improvements that are undergoing, that we are currently undergoing that I'm going to discuss in just a moment to address some of these. The third item was they were concerned about looking at alternatives to conventional boarding. I think there's a sense, a common sense, that boarding up a property certainly doesn't contribute to the overall appearance of the neighborhood, that it is a, a sense of light even to see boarded buildings. However, the costs of alternative, some alternatives were looked at. Some cities have gotten creative programs where they do artistic or decal-type window applications or where they require a clear polycarbonate boarding-type product instead of plywood that makes it look more like a regular window. There are some disadvantages to all of these. Most of them cannot be feasibly implemented on a large-scale method. The polycarbonate boarding, for instance, is extremely expensive, at least ten times the cost of our current boarding situation. And the ease of installation and the right to, and city's right to access those properties to do some of those installations is of legal concern. So I know that that is something our code enforcement has been keeping an eye on, but at present, they don't really see viable alternatives. Our next recommendation had to do with the public information, sharing a lot of issues on how code enforcement interacts with the public, how the applications that the city has in place interacts with the public, how they get feedback about their enforcement, their complaints, how they are resolved. And then on collecting data to see how what we are implementing is actually causing in terms of compliance, what are we actually achieving? Although, right now, we know that we're issuing a lot more citations. At the time this report was drafted, apparently, the rate of compliance, only fifty percent of those who are actually cited were coming into timely compliance. So we need to look at that over the long term as our programs continue to be implemented. The last piece was on neighborhood engagement. A lot of communities do seem to have a lot of creative programs in engaging their neighborhoods, some of which may or may not work in our community, but the coalition thought we should look at that more and perhaps work with the Neighborhood Alliance on preparing some guidelines for communities on things that they could do, our toolkit for how they might become engaged and help to address the issues. And I know that our code enforcement team regularly works with Neighborhood Alliance in preparing some training for the public on code violations and compliance. And so we'll be looking at ways to identify and enhance training that might result in some improvements. Those were their five major topic areas, and I did want to cover some process improvements underway. As we have only, since the last ordinance was passed, we've only been implementing the program on the ground for about a year. And we're still in the process of doing a lot of tweaks and honing of processes to do improvements. So we're still kind of wanting to see how that looks before we take on any of these long-term strategies that could be more difficult. But right now, that we know that courts and municipal counselors and code enforcement have been meeting to do some process improvements on citation, issuing citations on property maintenance violations. They've created a new citation book, and this is in stages, it's getting ready to be rolled out soon, I understand, where the inspectors will include some probable cause information on the citations. Today, I think they just check a property maintenance violation, but there's not specificity about whether it's peeling paint or a roofing problem, et cetera. And the new ticket should help with that information. And the process that they are envisioning will cut, cut some significant timing off on the current citation process where we have to lolly between code enforcement and courts two or three times before a ticket is issued. So with this, our steps, I think, we really want to implement and monitor the effectiveness of the changes we are putting through. There's been new changes on, I didn't mention, but on the city's app process, OKC Connect. We've got a new app that just went into place last month that should work a little more effectively in providing a conduit for citizen complaints that's going to be directly inputted into the city's SLA enforcement program and will greatly streamline the city's efforts in trying to take those complaints and translate them and input them into the system. In this case, it will become direct. So with that, I would, I did want to comment that I spoke with David Owen in code enforcement just yesterday, and he advised me that, anecdotally anyways, he has seen a change in the way our community is responding to the citations that are issued. He says he's gotten a lot more phone calls, that people are interested in complying with the violations they've issued. They seem to perceive a new level of seriousness. A lot more people, even in the neighborhoods, are working, painting their houses and cleaning things up. So that's a positive note. Question?
I, I really am encouraged by all this, that's for sure. I think that the more code enforcement info, I think it would really be helpful to a lot of citizens. I get a lot of feedback, and they just get back, the only feedback they get is no code violation. They don't get why there was no code violation or, and so, and that's real discouraging for people to continue to turn things in if they don't really know why the things they turned in in the past. I think the coalition is a really good idea because continually talking, those groups continually talking about it, it keeps it on the forefront of all of our minds. And I also think that another thing to keep it on the forefront is that we should always have something on our state legislative agenda to keep it, to try and keep it on our legislators' minds also. Because it, I mean, it is a real problem. Most of the citizens in Ward One that I talk to think that it's a, it's a problem that the city does need to address. And sometimes we get tied down to the private property rights and we just, but I don't get that feedback at all from, from people who, in, in Ward One, and they really think that the city should address the issue. And so for me, the thing that I think that we should address with the state legislature is the abandoned building definition. You know, because, I mean, right now, it's completely inadequate. I know it got scaled back a lot with the, with that last bill. I think that it needs to be a little broader than just dilapidated or unsecured. And I know we have a lot of ideas on how we would want it to be defined or how it should be defined, and I think that's something that we should, that reasonable people will agree to. So those are my comments.
I just, anything we can do to speed up the timeframe, I'm very encouraged about because it seems like it does take a tremendous amount of time. I just learned the other day that you can have a dumpster on your property for a hundred and eighty days from the time it's been cited, even if there's no activity going on. And that's, seems like an incredibly long timeframe. And I don't know whether that's our ordinance or whether that's state law. I'm not sure what that is, but a hundred and eighty days is a really long time.
I think that, I'm not my, I, I think one of the things that we can do is contact our state, our legislators. You know, we don't even get the legislators that represent the city of Oklahoma City to vote with us on these kind of things. It's, it has been a legislative agenda item forever. And we can't even convince our own Oklahoma City, people that have districts entirely inside the city, to vote with us. I think it's something, anytime you talk to a legislature, you ought to talk, we ought to talk to them about how important it is to us, because it does make a huge difference. It, it drives down poverty rates, it, it's a quality of life thing. I mean, it just really makes a huge difference. From the, from our standpoint, I've always thought that, well, first, I have a question. Do you know the ratio of the amount of money that's spent on abandoned housing by the city versus how much is returned to us annually?
I'm told we're looking at maybe a third of the cost.
We spend X number of dollars boarding it up and whatever, and we receive X number of dollars back from whatever sources. Do you know?
I don't know these exact numbers now.
I'd like to see us, no, I'd like to know what that number is, what the difference is. The other, another thing I thought of is, and it reminded me of it when I saw some of these alternative boarding things, the way we operate now, only a few contractors are, are bid on these contracts, and there are only a few of them that actually do the, the boarding. It might be a thought that the city could actually purchase a, something, a material that would fit in the window or that could be cut to fit, that would be more attractive and do it in bulk, buy it for the whole city at once, and then the contractors would pick it up. It's only, there's only, what, two or three contractors now that do the boarding?
That's my understanding, yes.
And I suspect they've been doing it a long time. So they, they have relationships with the city that we might work on a little bit more. I think more attention on our part is necessary. The guy that's boarding it up is going to do what he has to do to get paid. If it's really a more aesthetically pleasing job, he's going to do that. If we leave the ordinance the way it is right now, he's going to do what he's doing. So I, I think some more thought internally about what we could do to change it, what we could do to make it better. Because there's no doubt it's, it's almost as unattractive boarded up as it was before in most cases. I mean, it's just, it's just the nature of the, the way our ordinance works. So I think some more internal look at it and analyze what the different costs might be. I, I think the idea also of the foreclosure suggestion that's in here, we ought, we ought start pursuing that. I mean, we can't, we are being taken advantage of, I think, by people that buy property or permit it to deteriorate, sell. The adware tax goes down, they want to flip it to somebody, hold on to it. The adware tax goes down, they want to flip it to somebody, hold on to it, not put any money in it, and we've got to find a way to stop that.
And I think working with the county also with the idea about, to where whenever the property taxes get so low, it, it's almost worthless, even though it's a huge property, but it, all the properties around it are worth way more, but it's only because it's been deteriorated that the, and the neglect is the only reason that their property values are so low.
Well, what we do at the Lantana is in a good example, what we can do if we can get after it, and we probably ought to be more aggressive about it.
When you talk about legislative agenda, James mentioned the need to improve the definition, what other things do we need to be talking to our legislature about?
In this case, we don't have enough authority to foreclose the lien. We, we pay for it to be mowed, cleaned up, boarded up, and, and then we don't have, our foreclosure, lien foreclosure process is clumsy and difficult and sometimes impossible.
On, on weeds, dilapidated buildings and unsecured buildings, we certify those to the county treasurer, and those go through the tax sale process. So if those aren't paid, ultimately, they get paid through the tax sale process unless the charges are so high that just nobody will bid on the property, it's resold to the county.
Right.
Then it's extinguished.
Which happens.
Which does happen.
Yeah.
On the abandoned buildings, they specifically, the legislature specifically amended that statute to say it doesn't go through that tax sale process. So we would have to bring, we can bring a district court case, and we can try to foreclose under liens in Title 42, and/or we can get a judgment against the owner and foreclose it as a judgment lien. We can attempt that, but.
Well, maybe, maybe if we'd pick some of the most egregious ones and do that, in the meantime, lobbying the legislature, let us do it the other way, so we don't have to go through that process, but.
And really, on that particular point, it was really the county treasurer that didn't want to have the responsibility to, to do that. They, they objected to it.
And the real, can you give us?
And the realtors.
Excuse me, can you give us a list of the most egregious properties that are out there so we could take a look at potentially foreclosing on them?
We could ask code enforcement to compile that information.
And can you do, excuse me, can you do about wards?
Sure, I would think so.
You're heading down a very interesting, possibly slippery slope with both of those comments, because you may end up getting property that is owned by the people who can least afford to do anything near it, and you open yourself up to a number of discrimination actions against you.
Well, the same way, I'd just like to look at that.
No, I just say, and that's one of the things about, as you get into this, there are so many unintended consequences that can arise from an action that you think is a good action. For example, Pete was talking, we had a lady here a number of months or years ago, talking about the decorative type of boarding up that's available and they're doing, I believe, over in Midwest City. That sounded real good, but the price figure, I remember, was 10 to 1, 10 times the cost to do that. And then when you look at our budget, you say, do we want to spend this beautifying this type of things? So there's an unintended consequence thing in this thing that really is very frustrating when you, when you dig into it, trying to get your hands on it. But you've got to start somewhere, and the abandoned building program that is in effect, it may not be as far along as you'd like it or I'd like it, but it is moving in the right direction. And there are inefficiencies, as Chris said, in some of the processing, but they are attacking those inconsistencies as, as fast as they can, trying to improve it. So there is hope.
Good discussion. Thanks, Chris.
We also have a motel hotel tax report on air. And that concludes.
Okay. We'll move on to citizens to be heard. We'll start with Grace Franklin. And I'll ask everybody to limit their comments to about three or four minutes. We've got a number of people, but.
Yes, Grace Franklin, 4415 North Kelly Avenue, 73111. And I was here today to talk to the council about the concern about the FOP requirement or request to have rifles with the, with officers. One of the biggest issues for our community on the northeast side is that we still don't have body cameras. And I know it's a climate right now that our officers are very concerned for their own safety, about what's happening in the country. But in this city, I think the council needs to take under consideration what it would mean to a portion of the community if we can get rifles with officers, but we still don't have body cameras. And I understand that there is negotiation with the FOP, and all of those things are happening, but without that being in place first, any other action will not heal or help the relationship between the community and the police department. So what I, I would ask the council to really consider is, A, trying to get, and I know you all are doing your best, trying to get the negotiations with the FOP in the city, get that done, so we can get body cameras back on officers out on the street. And then really take the time to consider and discuss having rifles, personal rifles, for every officer on, on, on the patrol, because that is a, a deep concern for the community, considering we haven't moved forth with the body cameras. So that's just my biggest concern. I just wanted to convey that to the council, to really take into consideration what the community is needing to move forward in, in the healing process. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk?
May I ask one question real quick, Kenny? As far as the collective bargaining process and procedure, where are we at with, are we, are we close to finalizing something? Is, is that one option as to body cams? Can it be expedited and done separately? Can we move this, can we get the FOP in the city together and move that forward at a faster pace?
There could be a separate agreement on that if, if the parties came to it and chose to go that way. It's, it's on the table right now, through the negotiation process.
I would encourage the city and the FOP to work hard on that, please.
Yeah, I agree. Kirk Hesseltein, or Hesselteen? Tine, all right, got it right first time.
I'm here this morning to voice my concern as well for officers carrying rifles. I'm in agreeance with it. I think with everything that's going on, I think officers need to be protected. They're protecting us, and should the, things happen here that have happened in Dallas and Baton Rouge, that these officers, men and women, can handle a situation. With that, I also believe that with that increased responsibility needs to increase accountability with body cams. In my own personal situation, excuse me, May 25th, my brother lost his life. He was shot to death in the street by, by a police officer. I'm, I'm not here to say justified or not. I believe that's still under investigation, but with that added tool, I think that we could come to quicker result, quicker response to what happened. We're, we're dealing with eyewitness and police officer accounts that don't coincide. And I think with that tool that they did have, they have these cameras. They were taken away by the FOP, who was also asking for these rifles to be, personal rifles to be brought in with the appropriate training and everything that lines up with the city's current statutes for that. I, I'm totally with it, but let's increase that accountability as well, so that we don't have situations like my family is going through, where we're just, we're kind of in a limbo and we may never know if it was my brother's poor judgment, or if it was poor judgment on behalf of the police officer. And that's, that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I am Reverend T. Sherry Dickerson, 1219 North Klassen, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73111.
Can you pull the mic down a little bit?
Is that better?
Yeah, that's good.
Sorry. I just kind of want to also hone in on the concern that I'm sure not just the citizens and your constituents of the northeast side, but that are going to range across the city of Oklahoma. Many have reached out to me just since the announcement was made that it was going to be permitted, expressing their concern and their fears. I really feel like if this is implemented, it is going to cause a breakdown in the earnest pursuits that many of us, the civic leaders and community members, have been trying to establish a good and amicable rapport with the Oklahoma City Police Department, as well as our other law enforcement agencies. Some of the, the two events that were cited, that was stated why they wanted to, or Chief City wanted to go ahead and to allow this, those two, very tragic and unfortunate, and we are grieving because of those, I believe our nation is, but they were, they were developmentally very different in what occurred. And so to try to weave that in, to say this is one of the reasons why we need that, I just, I was one of the organizers of the rally, and so I have so much faith in Oklahoma City. We showed that we know how to do it right. We set the standard in showing that we can all work together for a positive outcome. There was so much love and appreciation offered, and I think well-received by the OCPD. I tried to personally thank each officer for their presence and for their daily sacrifice. So we, of course, are concerned for their safety. I just don't feel like the rifles are going to send the message that maybe some of even the officers want to send. I don't know that it's necessary right now. I think we need to revisit this, have another discussion, and come up to something that is going to present and bring, allow us to collaborate to bring more trust between the community and the OCPD. Also, I think that if we consider doing something like the Tulsa PD has done, they have put all of their policies online for general access, and that was a way that they were saying, you know, we want to be, we want to be transparent. We want you to be advised and aware and have access to that information, so that you know what we're doing and you can also have impact and have input in that situation. So I'm just asking that you all really, really, really ask the city to reconsider allowing these rifles. I just think it is going to be detrimental on every front. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we not have our policies online?
Police policies, are they online, Bill?
No, they are, they are open record. We release those to anybody that wants those. They're usually released through the, through the city clerk's office. I don't, I don't oppose putting them online. I think, I think more, more agencies are, in the effort to be transparent, is posting a lot of those, and that, that doesn't, that's not a problem. I would support that.
Okay, thanks. Michael Washington.
Thank you again, Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Let us get to the real issue here, bottom line. I believe Chief City, for the most part, is a good man. Matter of fact, we've had our differences, but for the most part, I think respect has always been there. I just want to enforce for guys that don't play games, okay? Number one, I think for the most part, Chief Bill City, in fact, had a problem with allowing rifles personally to be carried by police officers and bringing them to work now then. But because you have this absurd group, and I'm calling them absurd, federal order of police, who in turn thinks that they can overrun what Chief Bill, Chief Bill City wants to happen in, in the city, it is absurd that they can think, first of all, that officers would need to take rifles based upon two isolated incidents of cities, in cities that we've been meeting and meeting for years already put together. Nothing like this has ever come close to Oklahoma City in such mass proportions. Two incidents, my God, that's being totally ridiculous. Now then, Oklahoma City has had its own problems regarding body cameras, police shootings, Robin Howell and a few others' names like that that I can mention, okay? But what I want to say to you as well, rifles here personally by officers is only going to antagonize the African-American community. Why? Because we know that the world knows that African-Americans have been the most slaughtered, murdered, killed by police officers, not just in Oklahoma, but in Missouri and other places as well. Matter of fact, 123 of us today have been murdered by people in uniform, law enforcement officers. Now, I think again that the federal turn order of police are the ones responsible for a lot of matters that we have going on here now because of the discrimination of part of, I'm not going to name any names for the sake of possible lawsuits, I ain't got no money anyway, but anyhow. Okay? What we need to, to go back into, we need the community to get involved. We need our African-American community, as well as citizens on across section of our community, saying, we're not going to allow this. And the only way that they're allowed to get, continue to interfere with what this man is trying to do, okay, is to show that we are, we have the authority, number one, to go on, officers strike Mr. City if you don't do what we say. So they're trying to use that leverage, okay? Are we ready for that one? They use that leverage, okay, we'll strike the city, which is something that you don't want, okay? So in other words, he's mashed in and forced to do something he really don't want to do because, first of all, in the beginning, no, I don't think rifles are necessary. Oh, but Mr. John, is that John George, is that what his name is? Oh, well, we need to reconsider that. Okay, now, what about the body camera? What about the millions of dollars that you have been given already for body cameras, and for the most part, temporarily been used? And all of a sudden, now you pull back. Is this intentionally designed so when you get your rifles, that you'll murder us more than? I'm just going to keep it real in mind. Is that the purpose? Yet you cannot approve for us to have body cameras, which in turn is going to help both sides, the police and citizens? Let me tell you something about Michael Washington. I do not approve of any instances where a life is taken, other than if you have to protect yourself. Number one, I feel that officers have a right to safety, but I also feel that African-Americans should not be discriminated based on the color of their skin, pigmentation. We as African-Americans deserve the same right. Now, you say black lives matter? I don't say that. I say black lives will matter, okay? Your life matter, ma'am, your life matter. As a matter of fact, if Michael Washington was there and seen an injustice pertaining to you, you want to know what? Don't get Michael Washington wrong, because I'm going to side with truth. And if it came against my mother, why? Because justice must be there. So I'm saying to you, let's take this thing off the table. As a matter of fact, why don't you, as a city council, use your counsel there, Mr. Kenneth Jordan? Why don't we use them to investigate these monies, these millions of dollars, again, that the federal order of police has put in their pockets, obviously? Because again, this man had the body cameras going on for, for the most part. You know what they have a problem with, Chief Bill City? I'm not saying it because he's here. Y'all know me, but I'm going to keep it real. They have a problem because this man is trying to be halfway decent, but at the same time, he's, he's going to protect his officers. But at the same time, man, how should we have an organization that's outside come in and say, Bill City, this is what you can and can't do? This is preposterous. This is preposterous. Thank you, ma'am. I was quiet while you spoke, so let me speak. Okay? So this is important now. I am a citizen of the state of Oklahoma. I run a nonparticled organization, and you want to know what about Michael Washington, being the revolutionary that he is? A lot of people don't like what I say or do, because I am not going to sugarcoat anything for you. So if I tell you that your tire need to be straightened out right, I'm going to tell you. Okay, bottom line.
You're, you're at four minutes, so.
Now, you spoke about that and back there one time and now. So thank you, sir. I appreciate everything, and hopefully that we can get together. Oh, one thing left before I go. Let's be careful about trying to take people's property, because they definitely can file lawsuits because when you say egregious, that's going to be based upon your design about what's egregious now then. So then they're going to come back and say, well, I'm going to get you for discrimination, for taking mine. Thank y'all very much, and I hope to see y'all again. Have a good one.
Michael Hitten. Michael Hinton.
Thank you, Your Honoring Counsel. It's been quite a while since I've been in your midst. It's good to be back again. I've been down in Fort Worth during summer seminars and still recovering nicely from near fatal injuries, and by the power of faith, maintaining. But I'm here today to talk to all of you. I'll make this quick as possible, a quick response and a commentary on the recent rally held in Bricktown and rallies in other parts of this nation, and that is on Black Lives Matter. Your Honoring Counsel, these recent rallies, in my view, are seemingly convenient excuses to live in denial of what needs to be addressed in this country, and how the news media has not helped matters in the manner of fatal shootings and hostility against police officers. This, in my mind, is curiously one-sided. I want to quickly give some salient historical accounts I find strange, in which no national outcry in writing, a protest was made. 1955, Dateline, Philadelphia, Dr. Martin Luther King was at a garbage strike in which a black woman stabbed him in the chest. He almost died. Oh, my. 1974, a black man walked into the Ebenezer Baptist Church in Atlanta and murdered Mrs. Alberta King, the mother of Dr. King. I recently found some rather shocking and disturbing documents by a black American historian, Dr. Stephen Coakley, who, in Oliver Stone fashion, has made comments that Dr. King's assassination in 1968 may have been an inside job. Oh, my. This is scary. After all, Dr. King was in Memphis when he was assassinated. He was there on another garbage strike. Oh, how about those? I personally witnessed here in Oklahoma City, a black man murdered his girlfriend, who was a black woman, right in the Embark Transit Terminal here in downtown. Oh, dear, I thought black lives mattered. In all of these incidents and others in which blacks have been murdered by other blacks, I don't understand why there hasn't been riots and protests on our national scales if black lives matter. Oh, face for telling me, I wouldn't have known. I myself have been warned that I'm not socially accepted on the east side of Oklahoma City, and if I move there, I run the risk of being murdered. Hmm. Oh, dear. This warning to me has been by advocates who scream and protest, black lives matter. I find this totally unbelievable. Where are the Jesse Jacksons and the Al Sharptons to address black-on-black crime? I have found documented statistics of black-on-black murders have skyrocketed like a space shuttle taking off into space. In my perception, this movement on black lives matters is nothing but a fake, a scam, and a sham. I quickly close this remarks that I, an Ethiopian-American, who proudly served 10 years in the military of this country and served with pride, will be circling editorials around this nation in the hopes of igniting the co for a reality check. I thank all of you and the almighty God for a moment to be heard.
Thanks, Michael. All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thanks.
I know you weren't going to let me do it.